Select Boards Meeting, 10:2919. And present is Mr. Fox, Mr. Mogul, Mr. Dede, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 29, 2019. The first thing we have before we begin is public comments. This gives anyone an opportunity that's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be their opportunity to do that. I'd ask the person, if they are speaking, to please stand, state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to make a public statement?
Well, please stand. My name is Kathleen Cook, and I'm from 25 North Long Yard. I think I'm on the agenda, but I'm not sure. I requested for our community food pantry a donation to our fundraiser, and I thought I would just bring this in for more information.
Super.
Okay.
You are on the agenda.
Very good then.
We'll action it here.
On the action.
We can get to that one, take that out of order.
We can take that out of order. Very good.
Okay.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to make a statement under public comments? If not, I am going to take this out of order right now before we go into the hearing. So if you'd like to come up to the table, unfortunately, the press is not here, but at least we can maybe help promote this voice. Have a seat, relax.
Thank you.
Do you need to read off of that?
No, well, we are having, this is our third annual beer tasting, and we've had a lot of good success with this. And we are asking, I did ask the selectmen from Granville who responded to us, and Tallent, I haven't heard from yet, but I live here, so I thought I would take this upon myself and do it myself. But, yeah, we're, this is on November 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I believe you're going to be attending with us, correct?
I believe that's true, yes, yes.
He's going to be providing the desserts. So we were just looking for a donation. If you consider it, we appreciate it.
What did Granville give you?
Two hundred.
Wow. Go ahead. Was it two hundred and they don't have to go? Or was it two hundred and they were showing?
They didn't, they didn't say they were showing.
Did you tell them we would be there? Because that changes everything.
No, I didn't.
It didn't. All right. So then we're going to make a motion for three hundred, because we have to top them.
I'd like to amend that, because it is Granville. And if we don't double it...
I was going to go for half a G. Why don't we just open it at all?
Then I will accept that friendly amendment.
I'll amend his motion to $500.
Is there a second?
Yeah, that's fine. So that takes care of Tallent, too.
And we're going.
How wonderful.
Well, let's take the vote first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that will be coming out of the selectman's gift account, not taxpayer money.
Correct.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. I'll keep that.
Oh, you know what? Let me see that for a second. I'll send this to the whole, before I forget.
Thank you very much.
And if you happen to mention that to Granville or Tallent, that's fine with us.
I will. I do have to call, because I haven't heard from Tallent, so I think that I'll tell them.
Maybe they could bump it, you know? I'd call Granville back and say, "Boy, oh, boy, they were talking some smack about you."
Just let Sally.
All right.
We all know her.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Bye now. Nice to meet you all.
Good night. Thank you. All right. Now that we've ended with that levity, let's go on to the official business. Do you saw, got it?
Yep.
Thank you. Payables warrant number 2012B dated 10/21/19 in amount of $3,327,209.67. Payroll warrant number 2009 dated 10/28/19 in the amount of $241,635.66. And I need a motion to accept the regular session minutes of 10:1519.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Do we have any executive minutes?
No, there was, there was no meeting in executive last time.
All right.
So there are none.
Okay. We still got a couple of minutes, so I'm going to go on and to make sure that we, anybody that would like to show up for the hearing is here. Going to the action folder. 1A is a letter from DBW Director Randy Brown. This is concerning a change of an EDU from a 2 to a 3 because of a new use for the property at 491 College Highway. It used to be a former martial arts studio next to Dunkin' Donuts, and they're going to turn it into a deli. So they've, Randy's done his, all right, I take it back. Originally, he's set for a 3 EU, EDU, and they've recalculated it and based it on 4 EDU. So he's looking for an increase of 1 EDU over the original assessment, and this would be up to the sewer commissioners. Does everyone understand? Everybody had an opportunity?
It's consistent with your sewer rights.
Right.
Change of use.
So as sewer commissioners, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it?
All those in favor?
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstent.
One abstent. Okay. 2A. Here, Cindy, why don't I give that to you? Can I give you these other ones?
They could already go out of business, or they move. They're moving.
Yeah, I think they can.
Oh, good, good.
Saw them moving.
And I didn't get a chance to file that, and I believe the owner of the building is...
Nope, that's it. Hopefully, they save it.
In file.
Okay. 2A is an article that came out concerning five days of early voting possible for a mass presidential primary. This, of course, would put an additional financial burden on the town, the South Town Clerk.
This is just to let you know, obviously, if we get some money from the state ahead of time, we can use it, but if we don't, we'll end up, you know, possibly shorting that account and having to do a finance committee request. We did send this to the finance committee also to make them aware of it. This goes through the end of fiscal year 20.
Right.
There'll be other early voting stuff coming for next year in August, for the September primary.
Correct.
And then early voting before the general election next year.
Right.
But that'll be in fiscal year 2011.
Now, the Secretary of State gave us additional funds, not enough to cover everything in the past.
Right. And that's the same thing that will be, I think that some of this might be addressed in the supplemental budget that the state is going through with the both House and Senate versions.
Okay.
Which have not been reconciled.
Yep. All right.
This is to make you aware of it.
Okay. So this is FYI in the fact that another unfunded mandate the taxpayers of the town of Southwick will be facing.
Well, I don't know. I was at a debate last night, and some of that, one of them guys, there's all kinds of grants and stuff out there that us small towns aren't going for. I didn't know that.
He probably has some municipal experience.
Yeah, he was just rambling on and on about all the things that, you know, Southwick, Cheltenham, the other towns just aren't doing. So it was pretty impressive. I taped it, so I should be able to go back and maybe we can apply for those grants someday.
You could reach out to that person.
I could reach.
Okay. 3A, Powder Mill Playground Ribbon Cutting Ceremony has been postponed. It was scheduled for Friday, the 1st. Have they rescheduled yet?
Not yet.
I won that bet.
They probably need a playground to have the grand opening.
With the superintendent, I bet her a bucket wouldn't be ready. I gotta go collect.
All right. Yeah, you mean gambling is illegal unless you're...
Oh, I didn't get the money.
Okay, okay.
You think you want to get a dollar out of it?
So I mean, I mean, it's, you probably, when you said a buck, you meant...
I might be able to go down the slide first. That's about it.
You meant a duck, not a dollar.
Duck, a buck, a bow, whatever.
Yeah, okay. All right. 4A is an invitation to the grand opening of my PT. That's tomorrow at 12:30 p.m. They have events going up through the whole day. It's open to the public.
Yeah.
It's at 108 Congamon Road. That's next to Congamon Pizza. It's great to welcome another business, new business to the town of Southwick.
Awesome.
And they're also, what they're doing is they're collecting canned goods for the food pantry. So people that go can bring some here.
Perfect.
So that's, that's excellent. It's excellent. And we're going to have a citation for that gentleman?
I'll remind you of 10.
Okay. All right. 5A is from our new library director, Lynn Blair. She's writing to ask permission to create a general Instagram account for the Southwick Public Library. Currently, we, she is saying they only have one page for teens. So because of our social media policy...
They have to petition you.
Petition us to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll sign it.
Be careful tomorrow. They're looking for volunteers for that PT guy, if you read that article.
Oh, I got that, that...
They got that limp, they're going to take care of it.
That limp that, you know.
Be careful.
Walk this way. We're here all week, folks. We're here all week. All right. Okay. I, according to that, my watch will split the difference, so I'm going to ask for a motion to open the hearing concerning Double A Management LLC DBA Crepes Tea House. Motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll read the notice. Town of Southwick Select Board, Liquor Licensing Authority, notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that Double A Management LLC DBA Crepes Tea House, I apologize in advance, Arturis...
Arturis Robinskis.
Robinskis. Manager has applied for a transfer of the on-premise all-alcohol license 00011-RS-1222 at 157 Feeding Hills Road, Southwick, Mass. Previously owned by GED Inc., DBA De Giorgio's, manager of record Diane Arnold, court-appointed fiduciary Janelle Barna. Property description, two-story building with three rooms on the first floor being approximately 1,675 square feet, interior area to be licensed, and five rooms on the second floor. Additional licensed area is the picnic grove and existing deck of approximately 898 square feet. The proposed hearing will accomplish the transfer of said license from GED Inc., DBA De Giorgio's, manager of record Diane Arnold, court-appointed fiduciary Janelle Barna. A pledge on the premises, all alcohol license 00011-RS-1222 at 157 Feeding Hills Road. Maintain same serving hours as previously approved, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. Sunday. Time and date of hearing, 10:2919, 6:40 p.m. Select Board's Conference Room, 454 College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Select Board, Russell S. Fox, Chairman, Doug Mogul, Vice Chairman, Joseph J. Dede. All right, so we have a hearing opened. Would you like to...
This is a lawyer.
Your attorney? If you could introduce yourself.
Attorney Anthony Mayo here for Arturis Robinskis. He's applying for the liquor license date for Double A Management LLC, a transfer of license from GED Inc.
In your name?
Oh, Anthony Mayo, M-A-I-O.
Okay.
And you have the case filed, Mr. Chairman, and Cindy...
Oh, okay.
...documented there from the lieutenant with his feedback, so you can enter that into the record.
Oh, Lieutenant, Landis did his request that we get a query from the silent partner?
Yeah.
Yeah, from the silent partner, because he is not a U.S. citizen, so we can't do it without a social security number.
Okay, so we need that.
They're aware of it.
You're aware of that?
We have the request. We just don't have the, the actual report back.
Okay, okay. No problem, though, right?
I mean, I did call them today. They told me just put information which we have.
Yep.
He has a passport, a number, a visa number.
Yeah.
Visa number, so.
Okay.
And they said send it without...
This is what they said, just send it. What do you have? And we'll see.
Normally, I do it for my board, though, because if there's ever an issue with a bad query, I don't want to send it to them until it's looked into, so.
Do you have that request in writing from the lieutenant?
It's very, very back.
Really back?
Way back, way back under this, like, this document. It's like, turn that whole thing, turn the next whole thing.
Turn the next whole thing, too.
Turn the next, next, way back.
Keep going.
Probably try the last paper.
I guess you're right. It could be the last.
Yeah.
Okay. Colin Robin found nothing in paper that would prohibit the applicants from the approval of the transfer regarding Crepes Tea House. Robin, you say you're unable to run a query on Mr. Jivka?
He tells to that cost.
Jivka, because he did not have a social security number. I do recommend he, he requests his own criminal history query from CJIS and provide it to you.
CJIS.
Okay.
That's who, A, B, C, C will go to.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Why don't you tell us what you would like to do, and then we'll open it up.
Yeah, okay. So liquor license, we want to have 80 to 90% of Eastern European liquor. We're talking about, we have very good variety, we have possibility to get the hands on a very good variety of Moldavian, Georgian wines, Moldavian brandy. Also, some company which calls dirty waters, they located in Plymouth, Mass. They originate themselves from Lithuania where I'm came from, and they make honey liquors, very good quality. And what we want to do, we want to make a destination here. We don't want to make drive-by bar. We want to make it, make sure people from, you know, 30 minutes away willing to drive and spend time and have something interesting, something different. Also, since we're a tea house, we want to present alcohol tea menu, mix like cocktails with tea and different, obviously, it's going to be, you know, American drinks like Jim Bean and, you know, Jack Daniels and some other, like, whatever, general drinks. Beer, same thing. We're planning to have Eastern European, some different ones. We're still, like, we're still talking about the menu right now with distributors of alcohol. What we, we want to have like a Czech beer and, you know, Polish beer and some Moldavian beer and Ukrainian, and some of them going to be in the bottle, some of them going to be drafted, some of them even going to be crafted, you know? So it's not like, you know, something cheap. But, you know, prices, price point is going to be affordable, so it's nothing, it's not going to be high-end, expensive. Because a lot of comes to the price point, it's labor there is very cheap. So bottle of wine, for example, which we purchasing, and obviously, it's, no, it's, it's at the same price point which can be purchased American, like Californian or Italian or French wine. And the quality is there. I mean, it's really good quality, and we want to, you know, people to enjoy it. So we're working on the menu also to kind of incorporate together something different. We even talked about, like, hey, what snacks people use with alcohol in America? You know, basically chips, nuts, and, I don't know, nachos or something else, you know? Not that much variety. We want to present something different with the food also. So...
I think he's already started with the tips training, too.
Oh, tips, I have already a stack of people who are tip certified, and they have licenses for that. I just talked on the phone today with some alcohol distributors who work here in the United States. They, they said they're going to be helping us with training people. And they even tell us, like, instead of hiring professionals, sometimes it's easy, especially when you're targeting something different, to train new people instead of hire old bartenders and try to retrain them and, you know, like, explain them and stuff.
The plan is for you to be at this location...
Oh, yeah.
...in the day-to-day operations, and there is another location in West Springfield that does not serve alcohol.
No.
And he's not operating as a restaurant for over 20 years, I think.
No, 10 years.
10 years.
Yeah, in February, it's going to be 10 years. We never had idea for liquor. In West Springfield, it's always been like, it's not just we're selling food, it's environment. You know, we noticed, like, even now in Southwick, we have a group of young men coming almost daily, just drink tea and enjoy the time, and why not? Instead of being in the streets and, you know? And I know it's a sleeping town.
The location you have in Enfield, did that have liquor?
No. In Enfield, we used to be in the malls. We used to be in Enfield Square Mall. We used to be in Holyoke Mall. We tried it. This mall is not, it's not natural. And we like to own a building and do something like that and, you know, make it a destination. Instead of when you, on a lease, it's different, you know? It's landlord involved and, you know?
Based on what I've seen, I think the use is going to be substantially different than, than the use, the prior use, which was the, I think, Brew Two, and then De Giorgio's, the two restaurants there. This is going to be a little bit, well, a lot different, I think, really, right?
I hope so. I mean, we just ordered Roastery from Brazil, so it's going to be like, we want to, you know, freshly made shish kebabs and stuff like that. It should arrive in the middle of November. So, like I said, we want to make it destination, you know? Not a drive-by, you know? So, I mean, if somebody drives by and stops by, we don't mind, but, but, you know, we want to spread the word and, you know, like, a lot of good, interesting things we want to present, like, because even like, I just talked to today one of the customers, it's like Cabernet Sauvignon, like, usually red wine. In Moldova, they make white, because what they do, they, they make a wine not from grapes, but they make a wine from juice. So, and if grapes pills not involved, the wine become white. It's only one wine in the world which Cabernet Sauvignon and white. So it's kind of different. They have, they in the Book of Henness in Moldova, biggest winery in the world. It's 75 kilometers roads underneath. They have churches, hotels there and stuff like that. They have a long tradition on making wines. So it's something interesting, something good, and obviously, you know, why not, you know, get public involved? And them choose if they like it, they like it, if they don't, they don't. But they know a lot of people, you know, liking. And they already selling those wines in liquor stores, like, West Springfield, it's a big Russian-speaking community, Bertalis, they have those wines, Georgian and Moldovians. In restaurants, I know they involve more like in Boston area, so in that neck of the woods, because it's more popular. And we even have a restaurant called Moldova with all varieties and stuff like that. I mean, and why not here? You know? So, and we notice, we have, our customers is like 80 to 90% of Americans, and, you know? Why not?
The parking for this location seems pretty ample, too. I think there's, how many spaces is it? There's like 50 spaces?
Yeah, 50 spaces, and obviously, you know, should be enough. I mean, if needed, extra, I don't know. You tell me, but so far...
If there's issues on like a really busy net, I think you would be able to coordinate with the, you know, detail or something like that, if necessary.
If necessary.
If it's that crazy bound.
But we, it's, it's not like we're planning to do sales of alcohol or something like that. No, it's more like, like I said, we trying to get, you know...
It's going to complement what you're already doing.
Yeah, yeah. And we notice, a lot of people come and they ask alcohol. Do you have any? Do you have any? I guess maybe because they're used to it.
At that point, yeah, absolutely.
You know, that location to have alcohol.
Somebody said that to me yesterday.
No.
Questions from the board?
Is that everything you said you would do when you came in front of us X amount of months ago?
Yeah.
You've done a great job, so I have no reason the vision will change, you know? I think it's fine.
And if anything down the road needs to be changed or anything bothers anybody, let me know. We're willing to work.
Oh, we will.
It's not here to fight.
We've been fighting.
Yeah, but I want to be, make it, you know?
All right. So there's no questions from the board. We're going to open it up. If someone would like to speak in favor or against or just ask a question, ask you, please state your name and address.
My name is Ron Cena. I'm the closest neighbor to Hart on the west side of the building of the day. And Hart's not, I'm going to use Hart, it's just easier to talk to, okay? To talk before, introducing. When you first opened the business, you came to talk to me next door to the neighbor, and I don't know how many you've entertained and ate there yet, all you guys eating there yet?
Yeah, we've been in there a couple of times.
I've been numerous times, I was there yesterday looking for you. We weren't here until 7:00 morning, you know? But I've been in Southwick, I'm like, oh, okay, since 1973. I've probably been just bored like maybe 10 times.
You've been here too many times with new businesses.
It's just been a pain in the, for me to come and deal with all this stuff, okay? Usually, I hear problems and I'm always against it.
Well, you prayed the other one would stay open when you came in.
Well, I've, so far, since they've been next door, they've been great neighbors, and I'd probably be in favor of giving them license. I know a lot of people go out to dinner that have to have their wine or their alcohol with it. I don't prefer it myself, but it's part of somebody putting his meal, and I know what you're saying today. I probably lose a lot of customers here because I don't serve a wine or something in my meal. So when I go by the parking lot, I'm hoping it's full, so it'll stay full and go do good there, you know? But I, I know there's a outside deck there that in the summer, they're, they're out eating and stuff out there. I try to stay with my lawnmower and I try to keep my side neat, and I don't, so I'm trying to be a good neighbor for him. So I have no problem with anything that's gone over there. I hope he continues it. I don't think he's going to be a big science trying to make alcohol sales, they're the biggest part of his business. He's been in a first-class business now, and I hope it stays that way, okay? But it seems that since all the business have come and gone, there's a part of this license here that's always been a kind of a thorn in my side since day one, and it says here, additional license area in the picnic grove. That, that came, I think after World War II, and Brookside first came in here, because you used to have parties and picnics out there, and then when some of the places along the way came along the way, that put the bands outside and the cars parked, you know, they, they assumed the picnic area was right to my doorstep, where they drank, throw the cans in there. It just got out of hand, you know? Someday, I'd like to see that center just taken out of there, because there's not a picnic grove there anywhere. It's just a nice place to keep the landscape and stuff.
It's the top of the septic, isn't it?
Pardon?
It's the top of the septic.
Well, pretty much not.
But that's really what it is.
But if you give somebody the idea that we can go out here and party from this amount of land all the time, it opens up a, like, blank checkbook to somebody, say, we can do what we want, because it's in the liquor license, okay? Not that you're gonna do it, but you can see my point of view on, on, when you say yes to everything, it's automatically all enclosed, you know? So, I, I have no problem with that, being on there.
Right.
You know, your music and your building, I, I enjoy your music and stuff. So, so far, I, I've enjoyed him as a neighbor. I hope he's a successful guy in his area as long as I filter around in my lifetime, okay? So, I'll do what I can with my friends to support you if I can.
Yeah.
If you have any question, you have any question, you know, we pretty much have a, I, I'm gonna ask you, um, are you or your, your co-partner there? One or the other during the day or is there appointment?
No, it's always managers there. It's always.
Yep, what's the other, what's the other?
Um, no, he's not a co-partner. I have a silent co-partner. He's not living in the United States. This is what we have issue.
Right.
He lives in, um, Latvia. He's just been here visiting for a month and he doesn't speak English, nothing like that, so.
So, who's there in charge of your that?
We have a managers. All the time, they switching, they have shifts. Usually we have like, um, one somebody in the morning, somebody after, uh, afternoon. Um, they have a hand phone, like if needed, talk to me. Otherwise, they try to solve the problems themselves. They, we talked about every little details, whatever needs to be done, whatever. We're preparing for alcohol. This is why we're here. Like, West Springfield, for example, doesn't have a manager.
Yeah.
It's always like, you know, employees, if they need any phone call or something like that. But now even, we moved all the teas, we moved here in Southwick. Like, we moved everything, whatever needs to be, i- it's more space for us in the downstairs and upstairs. Um, and if anybody needs to talk to me, I'm trying to be there as much as I can. But I need to be in West Springfield or I need to see accountant or, you know, it's, it's always something. About outside area, we have some interesting ideas, but I would not push it until I talk to you guys and talk to the neighbors and stuff like that. Because like, for example, we have people asking for kids playground, you know, and we would like to put it something, you know, in, engaged, like, because we worried about sometimes kids just run into the river, to the brook. You know, we wanna put like a fenced, uh, area for them to, you know, swing and buy and parents to have some tea or whatever you wanna have or food. Uh, we, we like it when people come with the dogs and I used to see them when we used to repair a place. They come with the dogs and, and get the dogs into the brook and, and walk into the woods and all that stuff. We like to see them be a part of a customer, so maybe, uh, and I don't know what I can allow to do it or not. But we would like to put maybe some little gazebo's or something like that where people with dogs can come instead of bringing them to a restaurant. They can bring them to gazebo and have some food and tea and something like that. Alcohol is separate. I know I, they have to be on premises and stuff like that. It's not for drinking and partying and, you know, but just to, family oriented and, you know, this is where I wanna be, but this is a separate subject. I will see you guys after that and talk to building department, what can be done, what cannot be done. I know it's close to the river. Uh, I mean, we tried to start cleaning and we already got a warning like, hey, don't cut all the bushes. Because we tried to trim it and make it nice for people to visible and, and see it. We stopped right away like, okay. Because we don't even know it. We tried to make it clean, nice. But as soon as we started cutting bushes, we found bottles and paper and, you know, trash, yeah. And even now, we see a big, uh, um, metal oil tank or whatever it is.
That's still in there?
It's still there, yeah.
That's a clothing, I think it was a clothing container that was out front at one time that you could drop clothes off and I think.
Like a washing machine?
No, no, no.
Donation box.
Three, three years ago, I think that interrupted the river.
We tried to move it and we couldn't. We're like, okay, we need the tractor or something like that to, to move.
Yeah, work with the conservation.
Work with the conservation. Don't, don't touch anything unless.
Yeah, so this is why I would like anything.
Yeah, and they're good. Once they figure out you're actually just trying to clean up a mess.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna harm it. I mean, I, I'm familiar like in things people sometimes try to do nice and do harmful historic places.
Make it worse, yeah.
Like in Lithuania now, we have a building of over fourteen hundred years ago. Uh, and they, they knocked the trees off. Now, everything fell apart. We don't know what to do. We calling European Union. We have to fix it. You know what I mean? So, I know I'm not gonna touch it until I'm gonna talk to conservation and you guys and stuff like that before I can. And noise neighbors and all that stuff, it's important for us because I don't wanna fight with anybody opposite. I wanna them to represent, no, like not represent, but speak goodly about us to the neighbors and spread the word instead of, you know. And alcohol is not a point of getting people drunk. I'm myself, I'm not a big drinker, even I can offer some wines, you know? But people asking for it, they wanna, you know, have with the meals and stuff like that, why not, you know?
All right. I don't see anyone else. Are, are you satisfied with their?
Yeah, I, if, as long as down the road they have outside, it comes back to the board.
It, it, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely. I think everybody understands that. We made that clear, uh, in the past.
So, that, it is a great question though. So, the picnic grove is on there.
Yeah.
And with our police department in general, as soon as that liquor hits the grass, they want separation from parking to grass and you don't have that. You, you don't have any.
What does that mean?
Fencing, ropes or something, some demarcation.
Fence the gate or something like that.
So, I can't take a beer from my car, come up on your lawn.
Oh, okay.
And drink. I have to drink from you and you have to have vision to the grass to see your, your, not that you're going out there today anyways.
Something like that would be good, especially if you have kids and, uh, and dogs, like you said, if you wanna fence with the gate anyway.
Right. You're just a lot more involved when you hit the grass. That's all I'm saying than what this is. This is saying picnic grove, which I understand. But he's correct that it, it, you know, we just went through this with the American Legion.
Right.
Right.
That, they wanted to put horseshoe pits in. It's wonderful, okay? Uh, no, but it's the same, cause it's on the grass and it just changed the vision of what a grove or picnic is versus alcohol. And then they had to put fencing in and they're just more involved when you say picnic grove. So, as long as you stay off that septic field with alcohol, I don't have a problem with this. You know, the deck is fine.
Deck is fine.
Oh, deck is fine.
Deck is fenced and all that stuff.
Yeah.
It's, in my practice, as much as I know, it's always people try to cheat, like drinking in the cars and, we already had a word with a few people. They, they come and we're like, we pull the bottle under the table. It's like, people, you cannot do that.
Yeah.
They have a parking lot.
Yeah.
No, there's no BYOB.
Yeah, we, we, I, I checked with you guys because, yeah, this is, uh, and I checked with the town, like, just make sure I'm speaking like, with knowledge instead of just like, this is what I wanted. But, you know, we came with the bottle, told them no. They went in the parking lot, you know, and they in the car. And now like, okay, you cannot drink in the car, but, you know, another thing like how, like to keep your eyes on everybody's car and we will do our best.
Right.
As like in West Springfield, we don't have any liquor, nothing. We find the bottles in the toilet. We find the bottles under the chairs and it's like, people don't even see it, how that happened, you know?
I think when you were here originally and we talked about this going down the road, it's gonna be a learning curve.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you'll be, you're gonna be fine as long as you, you do the tips training. You'll listen to this gentleman right here. You'll listen to Lieutenant Landis, uh, and there shouldn't be any problems. But I think it's great. You're, you're already communicating with your neighbors. That's, that's the best thing. Because if you don't have problems with your neighbors, normally you're not gonna have problems with us. Uh, but we do take alcohol very serious. I want you to understand that. Very serious. So, uh, we wish you the best, but, but please, make sure everybody's trained properly. Everybody knows all the rules and is tip certified and we're not gonna have any problem at all. Uh, if there's no other question, I'm gonna accept the motion to close the hearing.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll accept the motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good luck.
And just for clarification, all right, if, in Lithuania, if you don't serve potato chips or pretzels or peanuts, what do you serve?
No, we have, uh, we already come up with some menu like, you know, uh, even like Lithuania was big, it's a pig ears.
Yeah.
And everybody drinks with a beer and tasty and pig ears, pig legs, like things like that. But like even, even here, we talked about like little sandwiches with a fish and, you know, salted fish and, you know.
Yeah.
Many more things, but you're gonna have to come.
Okay.
No pickled eggs or no pickled eggs, right?
Oh, no pickled eggs, but pickles themselves.
No lamb's tongues, right? Ah, okay. Forget it. Used to be a sheep farmer, but.
I'm glad you have a good relationship with your neighbor. It's very, very important.
Thank you very much.
You are getting tired of coming here, I'm sure.
They'll have years. Stay there for a while, you've been good, all right? Make a nice neighbor.
Everybody's surprised of restaurants leaving and coming back and leaving. But for me, it's not a surprise because restaurant, eighty percent failure rate everywhere.
Yeah, we know.
This is why, it's not like a laundromat or liquor store or hotel.
Yeah.
And this is why like, it just, it's a nature of the business. You know, someone stays, someone's just changing places and thinking they gonna find somebody right to stay.
We want you staying. We want you staying.
Well, I think just the difference is, is that this, this style of restaurant and what you're proposing is a destination. Cause it's not a drive-by restaurant.
No.
I mean, it's not in the center of town. It's not, you know what I mean? It's between two towns. It's, it's in an interesting spot for, for what it is. So, having what you're offering, I think people are coming to you.
Yeah.
You know, so I think that's gonna work in your favor.
It's a nice piece of land. It's a nice neighborhood.
Yeah.
I mean, what else?
Yeah, the neighbors are great, apparently.
First time looks nice.
Yeah, but overall, like, you know, it's Westfield next door. It's not end of the world.
Nope.
And just remember, we're gonna start celebrating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the town of Southwick.
Okay.
In the end, December thirty-first.
Okay.
So, you're gonna have to come up with a special for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. A Lithuanian special for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
December thirty-first?
That's where we're gonna start celebrating. It's for the whole year.
Whole year.
So, you can do a special all year long. A special drink, a special tea, a special meal.
These the colors, the green and yellow?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right behind you see the seals.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
All right.
We'll work on it.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
All right, good night.
Good work.
Very much. All right, six A, Department Environmental Protection, dear elected official, uh, this is regarding, a big surprise, the recycling program and what we're gonna be jumping to as far as rates.
Just to let you know, it's the latest update from the regional director.
Okay. We need to get in front of this as quickly as possible.
Well, you're gonna be, you're gonna be dealing with the contract in the next month and a half.
Okay, so what I'm talking about, we need to be working with the school, with the senior center, with, uh, every neighborhood organization, every group in town. Uh, because there's ways of removing stuff from the recycling where we used to be getting paid for.
In other words, it won't, you don't want that extra tonnage to make it to the transfer station.
Right. We want.
Cause you're not making money on any of it.
I am told by representatives of the Lions Club who recycle returnables.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I see their location.
That they said that at any given moment, they could go through our recycling bin and remove hundreds of dollars worth of revenue.
Of the returnables, you mean?
Returnables.
Yeah.
Where people are not taking the turn.
Bins. Right. They're trading them like they're recyclables versus returnables for the.
So, now, it's, this is kind of a double-edged thing, you know, and I don't care who makes the money. But get it out of there. And I think the only way we're gonna do this is make people where that the cost is going up. Probably the fees to go to the transfer station are going up, but this is one way we can help reduce.
You're gonna have to pass that along because your tipping costs are gonna go higher.
Correct, correct. Anyways, I'm off the soapbox, but I think we need to get ahead of it.
No, that soapbox is getting pretty big.
Okay. Slippery. Okay, I, uh, from Melissa, alternate building inspector appointment. We're requesting that.
Carissa.
Carissa Lisi?
Lisi, yep.
Lisi? Westfield Building Commissioner be reappointed as alternate building inspector slash mutual aide.
Right, cause she has office position in the city.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, we'll sign it.
Who is Bob, an alternate? So, Bob is the other?
Agal. He's from, uh.
Oh, Randall Bob.
Bob Sullivan? Ted Sullivan?
Yeah, he does, he's more attuned to doing inspections as opposed to zoning enforcement and all those other aspects.
Yes, yes, yes. You are correct.
All right, next thing. Go ahead, Mr. Steinhardt. This is on the, uh, fire station.
Yeah.
The, uh, well, as I had mentioned to you last time, we did, went through the process. We had six firms. We interviewed three and this is the firm that we chose. And with, uh, and checked their backgrounds, all of us, uh, with our different, uh, professional peers. And we have negotiated a contract for terms with them within the parameters of the amount established under the RFP. And, um, uh, this is the, uh, the net result of that to be signed off. And they're coming out Thursday afternoon to start the project.
Okay, and this is Russo Bar Associates Inc. And we are talking a basic fee of total compensation of two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yep, and your, your RP indicated, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand in your, um, appropriation authorization from town meetings today.
Okay, and we need a motion to, uh, uh, allow the chair to sign this agreement.
So, you wanna award the contract and authorize the chair to sign and accept the bid?
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Any questions regarding this issue? I mean, obviously, it's, it's a follow-up on our budget process.
Right, nope. We know we got a problem and we're gonna fix it.
Right.
Oh, good. Better news on the next page.
All right, the next page, nine A is, uh, something that was handed to me and I handed it to the CAO. Uh, and it's from our good friends at Western Mass Rendering Company, uh, with, with a contribution of eight thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars. And this is something they do annually. Uh, the, the amount might change.
The school, they give money to the school or another organization?
I mean, just a great organization and, uh, long history of doing this. Uh, they've been established, I've, I've lost count on how many years they've been in business now. So, I need a motion to accept that donation.
Motion made with our thanks. Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Yes, absolutely. We need to send a nice thank you. Okay, ten A is, uh, from FEMA. And this is, uh, making us aware that they will be doing field surveys, supporting the flood plain mapping updates in the Westfield watershed. So, they're gonna try to stay on public property, but there might be times where they're going on private property. So, they've notified just about everybody in the town of Southwick, uh, from.
Including the police.
Police, fire, conservation, planning board.
Emergency man.
Emergency management, town clerk. Um, so, when we find out, uh, exactly when they're going to be around, we might wanna work with the press just to make sure people know that. They'll have the proper credentials, anybody? Uh, so, and if there's any questions, people are free to call the police department if they want to.
Okay. I'll give this to hope.
Okay. Eleven A is from, uh, Deputy Fire Chief Richard Stephanowitz.
And it's to surplus old turnout gear and firefighting helmets, uh, which has to go through you for a vote. And at the same time, he did mention that some members have expressed interest in having some of the old helmets for decoration cause they would serve no other purpose. So, your outside auditor, uh, says there's not an issue with this so long as the selectmen vote and the, it's under the threshold amount which is five hundred and of course, that's for each item. So, uh, the outside auditor is fine with it.
Okay. Um, I have no problems with this as long as we can get one helmet for display when we do our fire display, uh, in the, uh, forehead. I think the fire department's long history should be part of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Correct.
We might need one helmet.
Well, you will make a note of it and let, let them know.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to surplus the turnout gear and twenty-nine firefighting helmets.
Okay.
And one helmet will be surplus to the town.
All right, Mr. D, second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will sign it. All right, twelve A is from, uh, Cindy Sullivan. And this.
Donnie Rick, it's to have a, another alternate member.
For L.
To represent local as our hospital. We, uh, have Bruce Versary as the primary, but, um, as chairperson of that committee, I had a difficult time achieving a quorum and could not hold the meeting last week.
All right, so.
So, I wanna make sure that we have an adequate number of alternates in the events that are needed. And this is one of the established fourteen categories of LEPC.
Okay, so you, we're looking for the appointment of Donald Rickson to the LEPC.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll sign it. All right, the next is unfortunate news. Please, uh, from, uh, Art Lawler.
Nope.
Uh, please be advised, select board, that I plan to retire effective April first, twenty twenty. I've enjoyed very much working town South that lasts nearly five years. I'll do everything I can to help the trans- transition as smooth as possible. He's done a tremendous job, so this is, uh, sad news. So, we'd have to, uh, acknowledge his retirement notice and approve to post and begin the process of finding someone to fill those shoes.
So, we're gonna keep him for another twenty years?
Yeah, if we don't accept him, what happens?
What happens if we don't accept?
Uh, well, he retires to the retirement board, not to us.
No, no.
So, this is just the courage.
Can that push him off then?
Right, just that, it's a nuance, but at the end of the day.
Can we get a little cheer out of him?
That's just speaking so highly of Mr. Lawler. You're on a great job.
So, in, so in my conversations with him, he certainly would be willing to sort of help the next person transition and he also, uh, would be available if you needed him to do other outside services like, um, clerk of the works for the fire station project.
Excellent.
Which if goes to town meeting next May, would need a clerk of the works.
Yep, yep, that'd be a great choice.
Um, so, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I think what we need to do is, uh, similar to the process we undertook before, the board should designate one of its members to participate on the panel that I was with. And we had another, uh, professional with us. We had a three-person panel last time. And they become an essential subcommittee of the selectmen. And then that could, subcommittee brings forward the final candidates to the full board. And I would work with that individual to set, you know, um, develop any modifications to the job description that we would have Labor Council make. And we would also set the salary range up to the amount that he's making now or certain transition depending upon qualifications and experience. So, uh, the board, this is a serious thing. The board should give some thought to it, whether you do that now or at your next meeting. We wanna make sure that we start this process.
All right, who's got the least workload? And Joe, you're gonna be doing the.
Who did it last time?
I did, I did it the last time.
You did?
I did that a lot, didn't I?
No.
Mugsy is zoning and plenty. You did it town accountant.
You did the town accountant.
Yeah, Mugsy, it's you.
I did the planning board, the fire chief.
You did the town accountant.
And.
Yeah, I thought, but I thought I was there when we interviewed, uh, yeah. Because there was, there were several people that we interviewed, several local candidates, and then.
I, that's okay. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
I'll pull up the minutes and see. I'll pull up the minutes and see what was.
I'd almost swear I did, cause I know who the, I remember the number two, and I remember the number three, I remember it.
It's gotta be Mogul, he's got planning board experience.
Dude, I don't, I'm not.
No, no, no.
If maybe I'm misremembering, but I don't swear.
Was it the custodian? I'll find out in the minutes, don't worry about that. Who do you want in?
No, 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 I'm, but you got a lot of stuff going on.
I get it, but if I, if, it's up to you, you're the chair.
No, if you've, I, I got a lot of stuff going on, so if, if you wanna take it, I'm gonna let you take it.
It's gotta be Mugsy.
Okay, he's got it.
All that planning board experience does trickle down to that.
Like he did now.
But, but, but please check those minutes.
I will, that's on me.
Because.
I think it was a custodian though.
I remember you getting a haircut at a certain place and somebody giving you a hard time about who we chose.
Yeah, because I was on the subcommittee.
They already made the decision to designate who.
I know, I know who you're talking about.
Okay.
Don't confuse that with the final three interview.
Right, no, no, I want you to check the minutes, this is nothing personal, but I just wanna make sure I'm not losing my mind.
And I'm right with him, cause I think.
All right, but Mr. Mogul is gonna be.
Cause I can remember interviewing people in November for this position.
And I remember because we interviewed, uh, cer- uh, somebody's wife that was in the trades that we thought would be a good person, we interviewed another local gentleman that was, you know, and we interviewed Art Lawler, and then we recommended back to the board.
It was, and there was, uh, uh, that, there was a lady from.
Southampton.
Southampton, East Hampton?
Right, Southampton. All right, just, just, just.
When, when did we hire Art?
Uh, it was, we did the interviews about in November.
Okay, I remember.
I'll, I'll find it.
Okay.
Okay, so that designate will work with me to do the posting, edits to the job description. That can come back at a future meeting, but that won't keep us from posting. Is that, is that sufficient to the board?
Absolutely. Would you like a motion on that? Would you make that?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Well, we're on the subject of that, so.
Is it only two? No, we all voted.
Hey, so what happens with the Board of Health? Um, I know they posted with the new hours and stuff. Do we have any say or anyone that, that sits in when they interview people? I, I know, I know that's their board, I get that, but I also understand how it trickles back to us every once in a while.
My understanding from talking to one of their members is they were gonna act as their own committee to hire, so they were going to do it, them all in open session, they weren't gonna have, act as a subcommittee.
Okay.
And they were gonna do it in open session.
Okay, can you keep me posted? I'd like to sit on those meetings if I can.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing is a, uh, we're signing a certificate of appreciation to Karen DeMayo, who is leaving the, uh, Community Preservation Commission and got appointed by the moderator to the Finest Committee.
That's wonderful.
So she's a very, very talented woman.
If I may, I think, I think I just had some clarity. It was five years ago, you were the selectman representative, I was the planning board representative, so we were both on the committee. That's where we ended up in this predicament.
Right.
Thank God.
We both remembered the same.
You were still, you were.
I'm only, this is.
Yeah, so that's why you were on the. I, I was gonna ask you, who was that other person? And it was Doug.
So you've only been on for five years?
We probably should, we probably should have, if possible.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, that's, it makes more sense now, right? I was misremembering too. I wasn't on this board, that's why. I was on the planning board.
It just seems like he's been on this board forever.
Thank God, I thought I was going crazy there for a moment.
So was I, I was searching my email, and I didn't have town email back then, that's why I couldn't find nothing, and it dawned on me.
Well, then I don't need to look at it.
You know what, we've settled it.
Okay.
Okay, neither one of us are crazy.
Neither one of you won the bet.
Well, no, we're not crazy. Okay, we've already done the donation to the pantry.
Yep.
We're looking for the parking wreck, uh, um, their old mower surplus.
Yep, we're gonna add that to the, if you wanna give me a vote on that.
Okay, motion.
I'll make that motion, but can you reach out to cemetery and see if they have any use for that before we get five dollars for it? Only because those guys are pretty good over there, and I don't know if that's junk junk, or if that's a fixer-upper that those guys could handle.
I can ask that question.
We'll, we'll make the motion contingent on that.
Absolutely.
You made the motion, Doug will second it.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye, okay.
Cause they do wonders over there, and if that's something better than God.
Yep, absolutely.
They did, and I must tell you.
Those guys are great.
They keep both cemeteries in great shape.
They really do.
All right, the next thing we have is I sent a letter to, uh, Select Board Support to towns of Southwick's application for MVP action grant fiscal twenty funding, and that's, uh, that's Stormwater, um, that, where we had the governor out, right?
Sure, yes, the lieutenant.
Lieutenant Governor, okay, so that's FYI. All right, um, we had a, this is from Cindy Sullivan, Executive Director of Council on Aging, uh, resignation letter of Joan.
Plankton.
Plankton, has resigned from the Council on Aging Board as a voting member, she'd like to remain as an associate member. So if we could make that motion to accept her resignation and appoint her an associate member.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Now you have to cure the defect that you got too many associates.
All right.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Have at it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now we're gonna, now we're gonna get rid of, uh, or move an associate up to a full voting member, and that's Harvey Holm?
Holm.
Holm?
Yep.
Okay, and he's been associate since two thousand eighteen, volunteering in different ways, I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye, okay, congratulations to both, and thank them for their service to our community. Uh, next we have another letter from, uh, well, it says to hold, is it still on hold?
What is that one?
The DPW Snowplowers?
Yep, that's on hold.
It's on hold.
Yep.
Okay, and then a reminder of the, uh, Forty-first Annual Meeting and Trade Show, uh, MMA, uh, January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, in Boston. Uh, Mr. D, are you working or?
I'm working, man, I can't make it.
Doug, go in?
I'm gonna be on the slips.
I am in.
Doug has, Doug has given.
I gotta be, we're open.
Doug has provided his information, so.
Did I provide my information?
Yes, you did, and I provided, so Cindy can check, but I think all three of us have already given the information you need to do the setup just.
Okay.
Take a look at the, um, if he didn't send it yet, the schedule of the classes so we can start picking and choosing.
Yeah, there's a couple there that really I thought were pretty interesting.
There were some that were, I was struggling with which one I'd like to go with.
I know, there's a lot of good, good ones, it is gonna be tough. Um, all right, I'm gonna suggest that, uh, we don't need to, uh, do this schedule. Tonight, we'll be going back to our weekly schedule, and, uh, we can review this, uh.
Go back to our week schedule?
Our weekly schedules, because we have to get a few things done before everybody disappears for the holidays.
When we starting that up, boss?
So what dates would you like to meet, just so we can, right now, we have the twelfth, we know we're meeting the twelfth.
Right, I mean, the twelfth.
So what other dates would you like to meet?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
We're not meeting the week of the Thanksgiving.
Right. Then we, twelve, nineteen.
Then we can get into December.
Okay.
Three, ten, seventeen.
You want three, ten, and seventeen?
Yep, then we're done.
And then we will be revising our schedule in January.
Right.
Okay, is that good?
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
All right, now we're on to, uh, Old Business, Veterans Day Parade, eleven, eleven, nineteen, and it's, it's, we meet at ten-thirty, kicks off at eleven?
Ooh, I don't know.
I believe, we're doing it a little different.
You don't have to wear any striped clothing.
I get, that was one of those animal parade jokes.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, haha.
Don't, don't feed him, don't, don't eat covered chicken.
Oh, I get it, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I didn't consider those stripes because of the way they were going, but I guess they were.
All right.
Like little root beer barrels.
But I, I believe it's, uh, ten-thirty, parade kicks off at eleven, goes down to.
No shovels needed.
No shovels needed.
I will be there right before eleven, I have a, we're not closed on that day unfortunately, so.
You're kidding?
No, so I will be there five.
That's fine, it'll be fine.
Uh, annual, we already talked about, uh, we talked, anything else under Old Business?
Only I have is, um, last year, we, uh, I should have bargained up weeks ago, I didn't, we, the selectmen's gift account paid for one officer for the animal parade.
Yeah, right, we did last year.
We did last year, yeah, it wasn't five hundred, of course, I don't know what the one patrol officer costs, but if we could do that again this year.
Could you make that in the form of a motion, Mr. D?
I'd rather not.
I'll make the motion.
Ah, okay, and I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
One of us stands.
It was for what, one?
One officer.
One.
Whatever the detail costs for the one officer.
No, he and I am.
He abstained. All right, uh, any, Mr. Steinhardt, Old Business, nothing?
No, I just, we have the, um, you know, the fire project that we're working on, we're gonna be starting that, uh, continuing that this week.
Okay.
And also, um, I'm gonna be meeting with the Labor Council and some people tomorrow, and we're gonna start the next update of the employee handbook, which is required.
Okay, all right, I, under Old Business, I would just, um.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, um.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like, um, can we get a breakdown of what happened there?
I just need a copy of the minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Well, that'll be six weeks, but.
No, the audio, we can get that two, three.
Okay, uh, under Old Business, I'd just like to thank the board for sponsoring the, uh, Better Angels for Use of the Town, um, uh, facilities on Saturday. Had approximately thirty-plus people here, um, had a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, but several younger people, uh, from Smith College, Mount Holyoke College, um, it was, it was very interesting to get their perspective as, as younger.
Did they get credit for being here? They probably got credit.
Nope, nope.
No, really?
And I'm gonna tell you, one young lady, uh, when some, the question was asked, uh, how did you get your, uh, uh, come to your beliefs, you know, and your position on issues? And when she talked about her father living under a communist regime for nineteen years before finally freeing the yoke of communism in, in coming to the United States, uh, was, uh, uh, eye-opening, I think, for a lot of people.
Yeah.
You know, uh, so, but thank you very much, uh, it, uh, for allowing Better Angels to use the facility. All right.
Just under Old Business, um, this past weekend was a very busy weekend in town, we had the cemetery walk, which was well-attended.
Yep.
And also the, uh, I believe the Girl Scouts had a trunk or treat, and I'm not a good judge of crowds, but I've talked to some people who are very good judges of crowds, and there had to be a thousand people there at one point. So kudos to them for doing that and pulling that off, and I hope it's even bigger and better next year.
And that was open to Talen, Granville, and Southwick.
Correct, and.
And the spirit walk was great.
It was, it, the spirit walk was great, and then the trunk or treat was amazing, just the amount of community participation, the number of people. The fire department had an excellent display, the police department had an excellent display.
Damn, officer dressed up as an officer.
Yeah, and only a few people asked Sergeant Danish if, where he got his costume, but, uh, sorry, Rhett, but, uh, it, it was a good sport, and it was a, a just a great event.
He smiled.
He was smiling, I have pictures to prove it.
Yeah.
Um, but it was a great community event, and some of the people that came up to me, um, that had been around town said it reminded them of the Fireman's Carnival of.
The Ragtag Parade.
Yeah, cause it was just that many people there on a nice evening, and it was, the weather was, it was just, everything was perfect.
Yeah.
And so, kudos to them for the way they put it on.
I neglected to mention, and I should, because it, it's had a tremendous impact on our community, is Franklin Land Trust had a little ceremony, uh, at North Pond, uh, we had the commissioner of, uh, Fish and Game out.
Ron Amadon.
Ron Amadon, I, I got to speak to him about, uh, other issues, uh, especially, uh, the alum treatment for Congamun. But it was a, uh, a well-attended, um, event, the, uh, fire department helped out by bringing a podium out there, so they have a podium and a, a microphone, uh, to use for the speaking portion of it, and, uh, just, just a, a nice program and a beautiful vista where they had it, you know.
T-shirts.
Yep, it's just well-done, and kudos to the fire department for helping out.
I did, I thanked the chief and staff.
And it, it, it was great, because when I got up, uh, you know, I certainly thanked Fish and Game, because if it hadn't been for Fish and Game and the taxpayers of this community, this thing never would have happened, but Fish and Game really spearheaded this. And it was great that we have all this open space now that hunters can use.
Anybody hunting when you were there?
Believe it or not.
Oh, I believe.
There were gunshots heard in the distance, not too far distant, uh.
An earshot?
Earshot, no pun intended, no pun intended.
None of us were wearing the right color.
Right, right.
It said right on the paperwork that you should wear orange.
It did say that, yeah.
But, uh, but that, it's, it's just great to have those hundreds, hundreds of acres now between Suffield, Connecticut, Mass.
It'll help when we take Suffield, we have that room to stage, and stage anything when we go.
Right, right.
Yeah, that will help.
It's gonna be, I mean. It's gonna be Russ Fox crossing the Delaware, crossing the.
Yeah, our armored vehicles will be able to cut a path right through there, you know, and, and hit them by surprise.
Just kidding, Ms. Mack.
Uh, somebody call Chronicle and see if they wanna come out and film it, but.
I think, Russ, one, another thing under Old Business, um, obviously, the town recognized many of, uh, several of its departments last weekend, a vocational dinner put on by the Rotary Club.
Oh, absolutely.
And that was a, that was well-attended.
Yep.
And it was good to see, uh, people who have accomplished a lot of things get recognition in terms of our, um, cultural council member, Susan Kocianski, our.
Fire chief.
Our police, um, SRO officer, Mr. Taggart.
Yep.
Um, and then the fire chief.
Russ Anderson.
And then Alan Sluslin.
Alan Sluslin.
And Alan, yeah. Man's a, a quiet legend, isn't he?
Yeah.
Just a quiet legend.
You could tell he doesn't like to speak in public.
No, but he is, he is.
Even when we interviewed him, he was shaking, and I'm like, you've been around the world, right? Retired out of Suffield or wherever in Connecticut.
And Baylon.
And he said, and he goes, yeah, I just, I don't interview well. You know, forty years later, I don't interview well.
He's fantastic, and, and I learned something new, and I worked with him for seven years on the planning board too, and he's just, I learned something new every time I talked to him, that he's, something he's done or helped or whatever, amazing, amazing.
He was originally our top candidate for the PDW director after the special act created the position.
Yes, he was.
Well, that would have been a good choice.
And you offered him a one-year deal, that's he puts nicely, he goes, you know, we just, the family was coming, and I guess, I couldn't make it work.
Whatever the board offered.
Oh, no, absolutely, but it's nicely here, his take on it.
Part of the money was coming from the Water Commission.
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's all good.
And he actually drove on Robin Road back in the day to buy a house.
And he's thankful he did.
And he knew then that we would have headaches thirty years later, twenty years later.
All right, moving right along, New Business, you're good, you're good, you're good.
Good sunshine.
I'm good, then we are going to be going into executive session, not to reconvene. Uh, executive session regarding collective bargaining strategy with local three-eight-four IBPO unit slash dispatch local four-two-four unit. Exception three, move to go into executive session to discuss tragedy, respect to collective bargaining, that tiered clear that open meeting may detrimental to effect on the bargain position of body, and to not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to discuss strategy, respect to litigation, that's tiered clear that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body, and to not reconvene in open session. Russ Fox, aye?
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Diddy, aye.
Thank you, and good night.